Corrections, I take a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Spolul?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVorah?
Motion carries, next item on the agenda is public comments, it's time to plug for comments for any item other than those in a public hearing. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you're requested to keep your comments in five minutes. You have two cards tonight, so I'll just randomly pick. Randy Gibson.
My name is Randy Gibson, I live at 1201 West Washington. First of all, I apologize for my attire, but when you lob off three fingers, it's kind of hard to dress. To my grandfather's credit, Gibson's solid color. I started writing the city, or corresponded with the city as soon as I realized what the structure was going up across the street from us. I spent a couple of years on the Board of Adjustments, and spent a fair amount of time reviewing the code book. So I have some knowledge, I don't profess to be an expert on it. I corresponded with the city, I don't know, three or four times? I don't think the answer is satisfactory. I think it's in violation of several codes. I think it's too tall. Sixteen foot is the code, it's eighteen foot tall. You can't have vertical siding, it does have horizontal siding. I think, I understand that the golf course was requested to change the orientation of the siding to be cowed. I think the square footage is too big for the property. I remember the other. In my opinion, this is a support building for a business, which in my estimate becomes a commercial application. There's as many as four and five people coming in and going out of that building. There's four-wheelers, there's mowers, there's pickups with loaders on it, there's bobcats going to nap. I don't think it fits the neighborhood very well. I don't, I guess I would like to ask the council, would you want this in the front yard? So anyway, I don't think it complements the neighborhood, it's not a residential building. In my, in my estimate, it doesn't meet code.
So to that point, actually, Chip, I'll let you speak, and then I'll tell you what we've, what we'll do after this. Chip, you're on to speak.
My name is Anthony Palou. We're known as Chip. I live at 417 Hillcrest Drive. I'm backyard neighbors to Mr. Gibson. Fortunately, I don't have to look out my front window and see this. On top of all that, I've been on the Board of Adjustment for over twenty years, and have been as chairman probably for the last ten years. Mr. Gibson is correct, in that it doesn't meet code. I'll tell you the numbers, one five seven point oh nine four C, number parentheses four, that's on the siding. And one six five point zero six K three, which states it's not to exceed sixteen feet, R two. There's also a chart, if you want to look at the chart. And that's on page eight twenty-nine, under one sixty-five oh nine six, there's a chart. The reason I'm here is because usually, or always in the past, when a building like this was applied for, and it didn't meet the code, came before the Board of Adjustment. One specific one was one in two thousand and two, Mr. Jay Stewart and his wife Ruth lived out at, I'll tell you their address. Twelve twenty North Broadway. Actually, it was nineteen ninety-five they came before the Board of Adjustment to build the building, very similar to the one that's built over there. But it came before the Board of Adjustment, and when we thought about where it was, and what it was going to be used for, and we specifically asked Mr. Stewart if it was going to be used to store commercial, like someone else's boat and stuff like that, he stated unequivocally, unequivocally, you say that it was not going to be used for anything but his family. Now, the thing that really bothers me about this one at five oh four Lincoln, is the fact that it's an R two, it's in our neighborhood, now it's a multifamily dwelling that it sits in the backyard of. But the thing of it, it didn't ever come before the Board of Adjustment. And it was obviously in violation, as a matter of fact, when it was being built, I came down and talked to the clerk. And the clerk tried to tell me that it met all the code because it had an average height of sixteen feet. Where the code clearly states not to exceed sixteen feet. By doing that, the city has now established a new standard. And the new standard is, we have no standards. So the code book, you can almost throw it out, because now we don't use the code. That's my complaint, as a, as a member of the Board of Adjustment. That this should have come up before the Board, and, and let us, the people that sit on the Board of Adjustment, talk about this, and, and actually come to a solution. We've done many things that, I don't know whether it was a building inspector or what, but a building permit should have never been granted for this structure. That's all I have to say.
Chip. I've asked Gary to, he's got you guys' contact information, and I've asked for him to get together with you guys, set up a meeting, and discuss this, give you the facts that we have from our side, and then to further discuss this, and see if there's more action to be taken. We have looked at this internally, unfortunately, with not being agenda night, we can't really talk about it tonight. But with the information I gave Gary, the notes he took here, we'll be contacting you guys to set something up if that's, works for you guys. Anybody else? Moving on, action number five, consent agenda, take a motion.
Second.
Discussion?
So. On item number eleven. I've been debating on how to handle this, and so I'll just make a comment, vote it through. But before I do, I want to preface, so this is Trace's contract, and before I say anything, I guess none of this is reflective of Police Department or Trace, and I spoke to Trace after I got the packet. I don't think enough can be said of the progress that's been made in the two years, and where we're at with PD, and I couldn't be happier with where that's at. That being said, I don't see multi-year contracts as a benefit that, it is a benefit to the, to the employee, I don't think it's a necessary item from the city's perspective. I'm concerned about the precedent that it sets, I'm not concerned at all about this specific contract, just given Trace's character and everything that he's done to this point. Again, I just, I'm concerned about the length, and, and the second contract makes the third easier, the fourth easier. I just want to add that color and.
Noted, and I'll respectfully disagree. Call for, or call for roll, please.
DeVorah?
Yes.
Vol.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see, I didn't see your hand up.
That's all right. I want to say that I agree with Rob, and I thank for setting a precedent here, and again, nothing against Police Chief and the job he's doing, but does everybody get a two-year contract now, or how does that work?
Well, we only have two contracted in the book.
Okay, well, I still think that's, I don't know, I know everybody does.
Roll call.
Um, Spolul?
Yes.
Sarchet? Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries, item six, new business, under new business, action item one, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen seventy-three directing sale of three million dollars in general obligation cap loan notes, series two thousand eighteen. For.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Larry Berger from Spirit Financial, and we were in City Hall today to take bids on three million dollars. You do have a letter handout with some information behind it, so I just would quickly run through that if the police is the mayor and council. As you'll notice on the cover sheet, we did take bids on three million dollars, we did receive six bids today, that is just excellent showing. And what, what we were kind of projecting for an interest rate, these are twenty-year bonds, was maybe like a three-five, a three-seven. As you can see, because the Fed is continuing to raise interest rates, people are prepared for that. As you can see, you did attract six bidders, and we did come in with a very low bid of a three point one five percent. Excellent showing today. Before we go to the resolution, though, if you want to turn the page, we did go through the process with Gary and Lindsay, and Moody's Rating Agencies. Moody's tells the bond purchasers a level that the city's at, and they look at all the financials, so that the purchasers have, or the bidders have a comfort level. As you can see, you came in at a double A three, a double A three is only three steps away from being perfect. Triple A is the best rating you can get, double A one, two, and three. So when you're in the double A category, you just have a very nice Moody's rating. I did go through the report, and I want to compliment Gary and Lindsay, they were on the phone with Moody's, along with my daughter who works at Spirit, for the report. And then there was some follow-up questions that I think you responded to very quickly, and that always helps with the rating and the rating process. I did go through the report and just highlight a couple of areas you want to pay attention to, I hope you read the entire report, but I just want to highlight a couple of areas where your strengths are, some credit challenges, you can read through those, and then it gives you a lot of good information. You're at four hundred and twenty million dollars in total value. It tells you that even with this bond issue, you're only at one percent. You've got a five percent constitutional debt limit, and the city is only at one percent. So you've got a long, long ways, you don't have much debt, and that is a good thing. It also goes through on page three, and talks about the general fund, they always like cash. So if I can just shoot a warning shot across the bow, be careful, always keep a nice cash balance, because they want to make sure that if things happen in the city, that there's no receipts or no taxes coming in, you can afford to operate the city for a certain period of time. So they talk about cash several times throughout the report, and Moody's loves cash, loves to see those higher cash balances. And also, in the debt structure area, you are paying off fifty-five percent, a hundred percent of your bonds will be paid off, or fifty-five percent will be paid off in ten years. That's a good thing, they like rapid retirement. You have to do your bond issues for the length of time that you are comfortable with the payment, but again, this is a very nice number, fifty-five percent being paid off in ten years. So if you turn past then the Moody's disclaimers pages, then you turn to a sheet that looks like this, this is your bidder sheet, and this is how the bids came in. Today, U and B Bank is actually a bank for bank, they are the ones that we're recommending, you do have to either take the low bid, reject all the bids. And so U and B Bank is a bank for bank, so chances are, these bonds will come back to Iowa, because they only deal in banks, and possibly some local banks here. We tried to get, if they were in with anyone, and they were not today, but now they get on the phone and they start reselling the bonds back. As you can see, also, they wanted, the way they structured their interest rates, people were, were willing to pay them a premium for these bonds. And in order to get the low bid, they have to return some of that, or all of that premium back to the city. So you're selling three million dollars in bonds, but you will, at closing in about a month, you will get three million twenty-one thousand five sixty-eight in dollars. And so basically, they're returning that premium back to you because of the way they structured the interest rates and the structuring. And so basically, it didn't cost you anything for a discount. As a discounted bond, you're actually going to get twenty-one thousand dollars more closing than the three million dollars you sold. You can just go through and see all of the bids that came in, a three point one five for the low bid, and then a three point, I just turned the page, three point three seven. So it's a tight bidding today. And, and again, they were all under our anticipation, just because of the fact that we thought maybe the market would start reacting to the interest rate increases that are coming. The very last page is your final debt service schedule, and as you do your retirement schedule, these are investments, and so we always want to protect the city with a call provision. A call provision is when you can do something with these bonds, you don't have to, but you can do something if you have cash ahead, if you want to refinance, if the market is better than it is today. We'll keep track of that for you, so you don't have to keep track of it. As you get close to the call, we'll start making you aware of any opportunities, and it's your decision. These are locked-in interest rates for the life of the bonds, so it's only your choice after that call in twenty twenty-five that you make that decision to either refinance or to pay, pay them down, you can pay part of them down, you can pay all of them, or again, we can refinance them if it saves money, or you want to restructure the deal. So you do have to wait until twenty twenty-five, but we did protect the city with that call provision in there. So with that, I would turn back to the cover sheet, and I would recommend that we sell three million dollars in general obligation cap loan notes, series twenty eighteen, to U and B Bank, that's United Missouri Bank of Kansas City, Missouri, for a price of three million twenty-one thousand five sixty-eight eighty, and a true interest rate of three point one five eight one. Now I would answer any questions that you may have. Lot of information, sorry.
Got a question from Mr. Berger.
Hospitality was great. Back in the meeting.
Nothing like a client.
I'm coming back just to work here. My pleasure.
Thanks, Larry. Gary, just because we've got some new faces here and everything, I just, just real quick, flip this version on what we're doing, why we're doing, and then we're gonna move forward here.
As council will recall, there was actions taken by the council to partake in expansion of water, specifically, water that is received by Polk City, and upgrade of facilities to get a water supply quicker, more plentiful. Second, council did expend fifty thousand dollars in general to make a purchase of capacity within the New Moyn Water Works. Fifty thou, excuse me, five hundred thousand of this will be going back to water, and at some time in the future, council will be paying the general fund back. That's where we come up with the three hundred thousand. Like Larry said, the, the winning bid went as far as to sweeten the pot another twenty-one thousand at no cost to the city, plus you've got the three point one five interest rate, which is in today's arena, be sure to mark.
Since you'd like to sit there and be quiet, I'll ask you, because I know from talking to Gary countless times, there's been a lot of staff time put into this, and I know you've been intrigued really involved, so do you have anything to add?
No, I think that we did really good today with the low interest rate. I was kind of fearful we were going to be at being three-quarters, but I think we did really good. I think the light work we did made it worthwhile, so. Kudos to the city.
Very good. Tell me the other thing I would, yeah, please.
Tell me the other thing I would add, is these are not structured bonds, these will bid, that makes a big difference. And I like the platform that Spirit Financial brings to the table, so there, there is that, you get what the market is really willing to pay.
Questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Just a quick explanation of how this money will be paid back, how we're going to do this. It will be paid back through general obligation, it will be a debt service as part of your taxes, like this issue.
Well, answering that question is something I've been very proud of since I've been on the council, I think this is only the third time borrowed money as a city, and this well exceeds what we've borrowed in the past, and I think that's something we can be proud of as a government.
Well, to that end, I mean, the best kind of debt is no debt, and the second best is relatively cheap, and I think this fits that bill. It's a certain threshold, and there's no practical way other than to go down this path to increase the amount of water that we need, both with the growth and emergency services and those things, so. Given the situation that we're in, it sounds, sounds like it's a validation of what we all kind of thought, and we're quietly proud of the fact that we've operated a tight shift to this point.
This is a genuine need. It's not, this is a genuine need, so.
No question, yeah.
Makes it a little easier to borrow some.
Question.
Maybe can't do that.
Okay, take a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVorah? Vol.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Item two, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen seventy-four, approving plot survey for parcel two thousand eight dash nine, excuse me, and parcel two thousand eighteen ninety belonging to Paulsney and Reinhardt. You want to speak on this? I think you are.
Yes, sir, I, I would like to, thank you, Mayor. Kathleen is ill tonight, and my fault has come to my wife. I'd like to tell you that this was in front of P and Z on June eighteenth, twenty eighteen. This is a plat that just falls within the city's two-mile extraterritorial zoning area. It is farmland, it is going to continue to be utilized as farmland or agricultural. The basic need for this one parcel, being two parcels, is approximately three-quarters of this parcel is on the east side of a ravine that feeds into Big Creek ponding area. And one quarter is on the other side. To be able to farm that, one quarter on the west side from the east side presents problems as well as going from the west to the east. The two neighboring property owners got together, came up with this deal, and when this parcel is completely done by Polk County, it will be lot tied together with the other parcels that are owned by each of these two individuals slash families. This is, like I said, it's going to be in the county's agricultural zone. It meets all of the city zoning requirements, should it someday come into the city. There is no street frontage at all, there are no improvements to be had, there will be no residential buildings, however, there may be ag-related structures installed. As, as part of the notes, I would also state that should either one of these parcels choose to be subdivided again in the future, that they've already had their one subdivision, the next time it will have to go through the subdivision regulations of Polk City.
So move.
Okay.
Good explanation, roll call, please.
DeVorah?
Yes.
Vol. Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries, item three, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen seventy-five, authorizing pay app number one, amount of twenty-four thousand six fifty-five forty cents, Polk City part improvements. Motion.
Oh, second, could you give an update on this, Mike? This, where they're, I know the weather hasn't cooperated, so, a part behind, I mean.
At twelve Oaks, or far behind, well, I'm not sure, these guys weren't going to come in until about this time of the year, so they actually started a little bit earlier, so really, they're kind of ahead, and the rains.
Bad assumption on, with the weather.
These rains, they've been, they've been working in between them, too, they've had some work that they could do. So, like, twelve Oaks has the water, and electric in, and the sidewalk and all the pad for the shelter, those type of things are in down there, they're just waiting for the mud to go away, and then they can backfill all that. And today, they were up working at Lost Lake, I know last week they installed the drainage tile, and I know the water line went in today, and I know some grading went on for the sidewalk, so you can kind of see where the sidewalk's going to go now up there, they don't have a port yet, but they've done some grading, so they have been working. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVorah? Vol.
Motion carries, item four, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen seventy-six, approving construction drawings for the storm sewer extension, whitetail red, plan two. Jared's missed us. Been here for a while.
This is a structure that is a tin whistle under Hug Drive that appears to be able to be used, with all the research that has been done. This particular approval tonight deals specifically with that storm sewer extension, and all outstanding comments on this change have been addressed and addressed satisfactorily.
Ag net? Motion, please. So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Vol. Yes. Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVorah?
Motion carries. Item five, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen seventy-seven, approving Kel-Tec surplusal proposal for computer software and video for Polk City Police Department, amount not to exceed nine thousand eight hundred seven dollars and sixty-six annually for five years, trace.
As I, as I submitted, this is a lot of law enforcement equipment and private sector equipment's moving this way, instead of us going buying hardware and then paying for service as it comes up, this is a total package where we will re, re-upfit two patrol cars, the new cameras, computers, electronics, everything in them to replace older outdated systems that aren't working for us. Instead of buying the hardware and then paying for installation from the same people, or possibly a different person that we got the equipment from, and then paying a third person to do the technical IT setup and maintenance of it, this is a complete package, the two vehicles will be completely done for this, all the hardware installed, and it's basically a worry-free five-year, it's, it's, the warranty extends on everything for the five years. There's a couple folks from Kel-Tec here that can answer questions better than I can, but if some, they're out of Baxter, Iowa, they're local, currently the systems we're using are out of the east coast, so if something breaks, we call up there and we wait for a ticket number, they finally call back the ticket number, and then Daniel has to go remote in, and they might not come up on Daniel's computer for forty-five minutes while he's waiting over there to fix something if it breaks. With Kel-Tec, they will remote in immediately from Baxter and fix it, or they in immediately from Baxter and fix it, or they will send somebody over here if they can't do that. If a piece of the hardware breaks, it's free replacement. They come over and grab it, give us a brand-new one. We're down on for a minimal amount of time, or now we could be down for up to a week waiting for equipment in the mail. And we're outside of the warranty, and we have one older system as well, so we won't be missing out on anything. We will take one of the older systems and repurpose that into either Taz Sipker's vehicle or mine, but these will be two new camera. And this is all, I'm not asking for any new money. This is money that I budgeted for my miscellaneous equipment line item. Over each year to replace and update our cars, this is just lumping it all into that one kind of worry-free. We don't have to waste city IT resources on it. In this, they will come into our server setup, even in the police department, with all of their software, their remote access point. They don't set the remote access, remote access point, but they will hook up to that, so the cars will automatically download the video when they come in. And this is imperative. As each year goes on, Amy, hopefully, I don't want to press, not gonna back me up on this, it is imperative that you have everything you do on audio and video. There, there's no, I'm sorry, we didn't get that. When you go to port things, it, it can open, a department, not, we're not open to it right now, but it could if you don't have the proper equipment going forward, you have to liability if you don't have audio or video and complaints are made, or if you lose a criminal case because of the inability to have that evidence there. Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I just thought of that as we were talking. And this gives us, you know, a much lower downtime. I say zero downtime, but it would, it would probably cut it by at least, you know, it'd be like a tenth of the downtime we have now when these systems go down on us.
Again, I think like what we talked, this isn't an ad. This is just more that you're entering into a five-year agreement that we have to-
I think like next, this coming fiscal year, I have $16,500 in my miscellaneous equipment line. I, that is, I, I budget that anticipation of things breaking or not working appropriately, and most of that is computer hardware and software now. It's just getting so expensive. This will take about $10,000 that each year, and then the rest would be for computers and server setups within the police department.
Makes a ton of sense, but just for comparison, the previous contract, how much was that with the other company?
We didn't have a contract, so we would buy hardware from one place, pay a local installer. We, the stuff would always ship them from out of state. We pay a local installer in Des Moines to put it in, but he couldn't fix it.
Who was as an example? Did I misunderstand that?
No, New Jersey is where our stuff would come out of. So, and then we would use a local outfitter to put the equipment in, but he can't fix anything. He's just a, he puts in the equipment, bolts it in, basically. Let me just, for example, just for one day of the company, we were using the fly somewhere out here to set up our server and train people was $2,200 for one, for less for one day, and this is for five years of anything we need during that. Basically, anything errant or anything you guys want to add?
I'd, I'd add that all the products and the labor involved in this proposed state contract bid, which means the state, Iowa State Patrol, DOT, that's all pricing that we offer them. We serve them. They're our clients, and we, by law, by contract, have to offer the same pricing to every municipality in the state.
And this is the highest it could be. It could possibly be a little bit lower, but it's probably right around that. Personally, I dealt with Kel-Tec and Kelly, who owns, Kelly Milligan, who owns Kel-Tec for 11 years, aren't at Windsor Heights. We use these same products, Panasonic products that we're buying. They're the top, top products in the law enforcement and in the fire service market. Any of the public safety and military sectors that utilize these ruggedized computer and camera systems. And I found Kelly, I've just gotten to know some of his newer staff, but they always be, have high integrity, always make sure that customer service is in the forefront. I think you'd be hard pressed to find anybody with a complaint against him or his people. I don't know if Jason's on the spot, everybody knows Jason knows him as well, and-
Working with him, and who is working out of Scriv. So I, I've known Kelly for a long time. I would act all this comment.
Mr. Mahan, I went over and did a tour of their facility. It's very impressive. It's, it was impressive last time I was there, and they've updated it quite a bit in the last few years as well, for that. But they do things right. They owe respect.
Questions for Trace?
You can leverage on your side then, or your ear?
Potentially, yeah. We don't have, we don't, sorry, we don't have any kind of contract today for, for stuff. Yeah, we have used them.
This is the way things are kind of moving, like tasers that we use now. You can't even buy a taser anymore. You have to go enter an agreement. Now, we come back, you guys, a couple months, because we need to use tasers in 2018. It's, it's a, it's a, it's just a service and hardware agreement together. It's basically just a lease. They were gonna talk about the duty weapons or handguns, Glock, most popular one in the United States. They've talked about going towards this a lease, so you don't have to worry about things breaking. And in our line of work, we, we really like to have stuff we know is gonna work no matter what it is, when you need it.
If you wanna test any of that, maybe raise some money, tase the mayor as a-
We will have a bunch of taser parts in the library.
Were you talking taser or Glock?
You said, being recorded.
I'm in for either one.
Wow.
So we can talk about support, it says eight to five business days. If someone's to have, if someone's to go down, say, eight o'clock on a Saturday morning, that car or that equipment's useless until, I don't know, tell me something happens at that point.
We have four people on technical staff, one's always on call. There was a situation a couple of years ago. Irvin Dale needed us, and Windsor Heights needed us at two in the morning. So eight to five is what this is all encompassing. It becomes a crazy out-of-scope issue that's out of the eight to five zone. There will be employees back in.
Okay, so there'll be a charge for the outside eight to five?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve resolution 2018-77.
Second.
Roll call.
Searchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorck?
Vote.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Took Kelly hot. Item six, consider motion to approve resolution 2018-78 Snyder and Associates invoice May 2018, amount of $42,261.77.
Go move.
Second. Roll call.
Searchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Same.
DeBorck?
Yes.
Vote.
Motion carries. Item seven, consider motion to approve the second reading ordinance, 2018-800, many provisions regarding fireworks use. What we decided two weeks ago. Take a motion.
Go move.
Second. Roll call, please. Did you have something to say?
Well, can you talk again a little bit about the level of complaints we had around this last year? I have, somebody asking me some questions about the change, and I just want to again reiterate some of the complaints, the volume, that kind of stuff we received last year.
I don't have numbers on complaints, because we received a lot of phone call complaints. The people didn't want police service. They just wanted to call in, and we didn't log those, just because I didn't have an administrative staff for, well, we weren't even in our police department then. It was being, starting to be remodeled. So I really don't have an exact number of complaints. I would say, you know, if I was to just kind of spitball, for lack of a better term, I would say at least two to three a day.
You say that was higher on the days that it was allowed, you know, in the length of time, and you think that this would help a little bit?
I believe just, yeah, anecdotally, I think this would help out a lot to be able to, we didn't have a lot of outside of that time being used. Sometimes a little later in the evenings after the timeframe, but generally, people were using the fireworks within the allotted time. I don't know if that will increase since we're narrowing the time down potentially, the third and fourth, but I definitely think that's a step in the right direction. I think it's a good moderate step to take, from my opinion, to assess. We'll keep better track this year. Actually, last year was, it was so new, and things were changed so quickly, and we were all kind of out of sorts because we were moving out of the police department, you know, the remodel done as well at the same time.
Thanks, yeah. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's fine.
Revisit again that, you know, again, we had quite a lot of complaints last year.
Well, we had, I mean, not to be over dramatic, we had a call where a neighbor pulled a gun on his neighbor over fireworks last year, and then barricaded himself in his house. So that's one that sticks out in my mind, so I think it definitely could justify just looking at it. I can think of a little bit.
I, I personally received 15 or 20 complaints about the loudness, about how often, about after hours, after the dates were over.
Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorck?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Searchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Excuse me, item A, optional, consider motion to waive third reading?
Option to, to waive the third reading. I'll make that a motion.
Okay. Second. Roll call, please.
DeBorck?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Searchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, reports, particulars, the only thing I have, is we had a ribbon cutting today for city laundering. I'd like to officially welcome them to town. They've been functioning out of their new building since May. Nice new building out there, nice group of people. I know their rats have already increased. Look forward to welcoming, welcoming them to Polk City. If you've not been out and taken a drive down Vista Lake Drive, I encourage you to do so. That's all I have. Anybody else, anything else?
I have done that. I have not noticed any increase in tra-, well, I've noticed an increase in traffic, but not because of-
Yeah, yeah. Anything else?
I just add, is there a different way we can structure our public comments? I, I don't like how people come in, say their piece, and then leave. And, and this may be the discerning correct way to go, but, and I have no problem whatsoever. I wish they were still here. First gentleman, kind of inclined to see his point. I don't particularly care for the second gentleman being accusatory and borderline disrespectful to, and maybe this is a product of some of the things that have happened last month, and the bullets that get taken by staff. But you can disagree with the point. I, I would imagine, as she does every day that I see, Jenny gave him the facts that he didn't like it, and so the, the tone, the finger pointing figuratively and literally, I just don't care for it. And they come in, they say their piece, and then they leave, and they think they're in City Hall or whatever, and it's just, it's frustrating to say that we don't care for the, the codebook because of one little piece that he may or may not have interpreted correctly should be thrown out. I guess I can say that if he's referencing the codebook from 1995, he can throw that out. It's changed probably a dozen times since, but I just don't, it, again, I'm, so on top of all of that, you've got the process that he didn't clearly understand where that permit didn't even come to this group. So again, to, to get up here, and I know I'm talking to a room with, those people aren't here anymore.
Yeah, I'd like to defer to Amy.
First, there is absolutely no legal requirement that you allow comments at all. I mean, so if you wanted to do away with public comments at the beginning of your council meeting, the only legal requirement is this during a public hearing.
Okay.
You have to give an opportunity to the public. But other than that, so it's entirely up to you how that process does. Two things from, that I want to comment on. Number one, I always tell, advise councils, you shouldn't interact with them because you don't know, you know, you're just, you're being kind of blindsided by the comments usually, and so it's, you really need to step back and think, and it's appropriate to defer it to someone else, but you can't. The other comment tonight, and that goes to this specific issue, if Mr. Capello's sitting on the Board of Adjustments, I'm kind of hesitant to have him up here speaking on a public comment. I think he probably needs to recuse himself if anything concerning this matter, whatever, come down before the Board of Adjustment. But that's a side issue, but-
Yeah. Well, and, and you're right, and, and that's wise counsel, but, but I just, I, it's more maybe emotional that, that you're-
I appreciate that.
You know, the other side, the, what I would say, the factual side, isn't being represented, and again, more of the tone and, and I'm combating confrontation with confrontational to a certain degree, so whatever. It just, I don't know, I, that's-
I, I would, I would say that four years ago, I think, is probably when we put this policy into play, or this, this into place, and policy, right, or whatever.
Yeah, policy.
It was, is when we put this in place, because before that, it was kind of a free-for-all, and when we ran into the free-for-all, then you, then it became, you were engaging, and really then you were going along the lines of potentially getting into a gray area because it's not on your agenda, and technically, you shouldn't even be, you know, taking any action to it. So I tried to visit with those people, and I did ahead of that, ahead of them making comments. They wanted it on the record, but to, you know, encourage them to come down and, and have their time. And, and at that point, it could potentially be a future agenda item, you know, if we so decide after meeting there that it becomes an agenda item, then we can, you know, further discuss. And I understand what you're saying there, but I, I still agree with, I think, how we got to the point of where we did with the speaker guards and what the, what the overall policy as a whole.
We had no way to control this before.
Yes, right.
And I don't want to, to sway anybody that wants to say their piece from saying, he's having a problem with that, but if you're gonna do that, you need to be, do it in a responsible, professional, polite way, again.
And that's called out in the policy. I mean, it's very specific to that, you know?
I know, but I, I don't feel that Jenny got the fair end of the stick here tonight. I know that's happened a lot, so maybe I'm taking it out on them when I shouldn't be in, but anyway, it's just, but specific to that building, we're gonna make sure that everything's good and respond back to that.
And, and specific to that building, I would say that there has been a lot of interaction specific to that building already, and, and so I look forward to hearing the outcome.
Yep.
But there's been a lot of things that have already looked at through there, so, yes.
Well, both those gentlemen called me, and I encouraged them to come to council. I didn't, I didn't have answers for them. When I came down here and asked, I got the same answer as they did, that it met code. So I, I couldn't tell them anything other than that.
No, and again, I, I don't have an issue with them coming down. I just-
Well, if you're gonna sit up here, you better grow a little thicker skin, because you're gonna hear a lot, lot worse than that, because we have.
Thin skin isn't the issue. And standing up for someone giving something that they don't want to hear, and, and, and using a comment card to bully them isn't, isn't what I'm talking about at all.
Yeah, but I didn't see it that way.
Okay.
I did.
Maybe I'm interpreting wrong.
Yeah. I, I mean, we've gone through things in the past where we've been personally threatened, we've been sworn out. Now, that would, that's why we, without the policy we have.
Anything else down here? Down here, across the table? Anyone, anyone, anyone? Take a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second. All the favor?
Thank you.